Everyone, welcome to the Delnart County Board Supervisors Meeting this day, February 13th, 2018. It is Tuesday, and a happy Tuesday it is here. Nice sunny day for us all to come out and sit inside and listen to us all to talk. So, we'll pause briefly for a moment of reflection. Thank you. Will you please stand and follow me in the Pledge Allegiance?
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any introduction to new employees today? Okay. Seeing none. Liz, any action that report out of closed session?
No reportable action.
Okay. Terrific. Just so everybody's aware, you might see a couple of us absent today. Both Supervisor Cowan and Supervisor Berkowitz. They're with a delegation to Ritzus and Takata, Japan this week. Hopefully, everybody's following them on Facebook. It's an excellent opportunity for us to move forward potentially with what our children have been requesting of us ever since the little ship Kamami wound up on our coast many years ago in 2013 from the 2011 tsunami that hit that city unfortunately. We're working towards a sister city agreement, and the delegation that is there today is really striving hard to bring representatives from the city of Ritzus and Takata back to Crescent City. And I just heard late last night that they confirmed a visit of their city council to us starting April 15th of this year. So hopefully, with any luck, we'll be able to fall through on that promise that we've made to our children and have a sister city relationship with the city of Ritzus and Takata sometime early this year. So seeing that, we'll go ahead and move on to our consent agenda item, which on today's agenda is Items 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and Item 13 and 14.
Motion for approval?
We have a motion and a second. Public comment on consent agenda?
Well, again, I'm Craig Swanson. I'm sure you recognize me.
Good morning, Craig.
I gave you a copy of the statement. I'm going to read it into the record.
Do we have that copy?
This is part of a -- this is an excerpt from a larger study about home care and aging. It's entitled "Delnart Fact Sheet on Care Crisis." Urgency of Crisis. In California, the number of individuals older than 65 is expected to increase from 5.2 million in 2015 to 9 million in 2030. About half of the older adults are in need of assistance for their daily living activities, and older adults make up half of the people in need of long-term care. The California Employment Development Department projects that an additional 200,000 home care workers will be needed by 2024. Why is home care important? Home care is extremely important, allowing people with disabilities or chronic illnesses to stay in their community, maintain their independence, improve their quality of life. However, it can also be very challenging work to do. Studies show that when states cut back on home care services, they end up having to spend more money on institutional long-term care. Researchers have documented that the lack of sufficient care leads to negative health effects such as missing meals, dehydration, falls, burns, wetting or sorely clothes, and making a mistake in taking medications. Effective lower wages, which is what home care workers currently have, minimum wage. The California Legislation Analysis Office estimates that the annual turnover of IHSS workers is about 33 percent. That means that as many as 180,000 consumers must search for and hire and train a new home care provider each year. While many factors go into high turnover, experts agree that one of the leading causes is the low wages that providers receive. Economic impact of raising the wages of home care workers. Higher wages will inject a larger amount of cash into Delnart County as little cost to local taxpayers. The vast majority of the funds used to pay for IHSS wage increase will come from federal and state dollars, 87 percent. The wage increase won't just stay with the providers. The extra money gets spent in the stores and the community, boosting small businesses and supporting jobs. I'd like to add that as an IHSS home care worker, which I've been doing for two years, before that I was at Walmart. Walmart paid me minimum wage when I started out, but because they gave merit pay increases and I was entitled to benefits and I got part of the quarterly bonus, my income was quite a bit larger than it is just being an IHS worker. So, the contract has been submitted to you, your negotiating team. I want you to give it consideration. We don't -- we think our demands are all within reason. We've been analyzed that they're not going to raise the cost to the county to any great deal, and I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on consent agenda items? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Mr. Chairman, just point of order. I know the sheriff just came in late. I did not pull Item 6 because I'm in support of it, which won't change the vote, but Sheriff, I wonder if you wouldn't mind coming up and explaining so many things in the consent agenda are discussed that no one, the public, has no knowledge of, and this has to do with the approving of our board and the sheriff to enter a new agreement with the Drug Enforcement Agency, federal, to defray costs related to the eradication and suppression of illicit marijuana, and this is a $35,000 grant. And I was reluctant to put you on the spot, Sheriff, but we did speak about this yesterday, and I would hope that you would give the public some edification on what this is all about.
Item number 26 on the consent agenda.
I think it's Item Number 6.
Yep.
Sorry for being late and thanks for letting everybody know I was. What can I do for you? We want to know about Number 6?
Yes, that's what we spoke about yesterday. What is this all about?
Okay, so this is a grant that the sheriff's office has received from the DEA for many years now, including prior to my administration. It fluctuates in range from somewhere around 25,000 to 50,000 a year. I think this year it was for 35,000. The money is to support marijuana eradication on National Forest Service land specifically. So it pays for flight time, some overtime coverage, a small amount usually goes to some equipment that would associate with that.
That's exactly what I wanted you to explain since you were here, and we discussed it yesterday. I wanted the public to know about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Sheriff.
You're welcome.
Okay. Since there was no further public comment on the consent agenda items, Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
All right. We're going to go ahead and move to our timed agenda item, which is our regular public comment period. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Please. That's -- yeah. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Kelly. I'm Kelly Harrison. I'm a resident of the city, but I'm here today on behalf of the Humane Society of Delnart. The Humane Society of Delnart is the local cat shelter on Elk Valley Road near Howland Hill. We are a nonprofit organization run completely by volunteers. We also work in partnership with the local dog pound. February is National Spay and Neuter Awareness Month. Last year, the Humane Society of Delnart helped to spay and neuter 525 cats and 232 dogs, and we are already off to a great start for this year. The spay and neuter program has been such a success that our intake numbers have gone down each year from 375 in 2011 to only 128 in 2017. In fact, last month, the cat shelter was completely cat-free. This doesn't mean we're slowing down, though. Our current goal is to help control overcrowding at the dog pound. As you know, the majority of the dogs at the pound are pit bulls. So in honor of Spay -- National Spay and Neuter Awareness Month, we are offering our For Pit's Sake Spay and Neuter Special. A male pit neuter is $25, and a female pit spay is $35. Rabies vaccinations are also available for $10. This event is on February 27th, and space is limited. Last I heard, we only had three more spots left. Anyone interested should call 707-464-1686 to reserve a spot. And if they don't have a pit bull or can't make the 27th, keep checking the Humane Society of Delnart's Facebook page or website for our next snipped Spay and Neuter Clinic or for the For Pit's Sake Spay and Neuter Special. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
I have flyers.
Excellent. You're welcome. Other public comment?
Good morning.
Morning. How are you guys doing?
Doing great, thank you.
Good. Eli Naffa, and I'm a resident of the county, and there's two items I want to speak about today. The first one is regarding Charter Spectrum. So unfortunately, they've pulled their channels, NBC, CBS, and a third station. And although they say on their website that they continue to negotiate, over the weekend I spoke with the owner of Northwest Broadcasting, which owns NBC, CBS, and they said that they haven't heard from him for quite a while, which is really unfair because this is an issue that needs to be addressed. And if they're in negotiation, that's fine, but if they're not, then somehow we need to get them into negotiation. I know we pay a franchise fee, which is actually $6.79 a month, and it appears on our bill, so they're actually charging us for that franchise fee. So I'd like to see the county and the city, both of them, you know, somehow put some pressure on the state body that's handling this to make sure that Charter Spectrum goes to the table and negotiates fairly, like they supposedly say on their website, which unfortunately, they're not doing. Also, they say that there's NBCOlympics.com that you could watch. So I was able to watch it, I think, on Saturday, but on Sunday, when I tried to watch, this is on the internet, when I tried to watch it, it said that you can't watch it because Spectrum doesn't carry NBC. So I called and talked to -- tried to talk to them yesterday. They said they'd look into it and get back to me within 24 hours, and so far, the 24 hours haven't run out, but they haven't gotten back to me. There's at least 3,000 households in the county, and I don't know how many more in the city, and so it really is a major impact on us. Unable to watch the Super Bowl except on the internet, so I was able to pull it on the internet and watch it. Usually, we'd watch it on a big screen. So anyway, I would like to see some pressure applied on Charter Spectrum to adequately address this and negotiate fairly, like they claim they are. The second thing is regarding the offshore oil drilling, which the newspaper on Saturday said that the UROCs oppose offshore drilling, which is nice, but I'd like to see the county and also the city and the harbor make a statement regarding that. The fishing industry is very important for our community. If we do end up with an oil spill like what happened in Alaska with the Valdez Exxon, also what happened in the Gulf of Mexico, it can destroy our fishing industry. Tourism is very important for our area also, and seeing oil rigs off the shore would not be very attractive. And then also, if there is a spill, then it would ruin the shoreline, which would affect tourism. Now, there's a glut of oil in the marketplace right now, which means that we don't have to resort to drastic measures of offshore oil drilling. I think that that's something that should be kept once we are in a situation where it's dire and we do need oil. Right now, we really don't in the nation, since there is that glut. And also, President Trump has pulled Florida and says, okay, we're not going to have oil drilling off of the Florida coast. Well, I think he should do the same thing for California. I mean, just because he has a residence there, I don't think that that's fair. So anyway, I'd like to see the county and the city and the harbor take a stance on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Naffa.
Mr. Naffa?
Yes.
If I could.
Please.
I just had a couple of questions. You said you contacted the owner of Northwest Broadcasting?
Yes.
And who is that?
His name is Brian Brady. He's out of Michigan, and it's funny how I contacted him because when I called and talked to Charter Spectrum and I was complaining to them, and I told them, you know, what channels can we get to see the Olympics? They gave me that number. So I call that number, and then he answers, and I'm thinking it was going to be someone from Charter Spectrum. I guess they're trying to get us to put pressure on the owner, because he says he's been receiving a whole bunch of calls.
Yeah. I just was interested in that because really, I'd like to call them and find, I mean, the Channel 3 and Channel 6, CBS and NBC that we've been getting is certainly less than adequate with all the pixelation, and, you know, you don't get to see half the shows anyway anymore. And so there's a problem with both sides here, and I'm with you 100 percent that we need to get this resolved, and it's, I've had many calls on it over the last week about it and wanting us to do something about it. Unfortunately, we don't have franchise agreements anymore since 2006 with the cable company, so we don't have a lot of power, but we can certainly maybe exert some pressure.
Right.
Hopefully, on something. And the offshore drilling, I think we have opposed offshore drilling in the past, the bills that have come through, so that's something that we've already done, and we certainly can do again.
Yeah, I think it would be timely since the Trump administration is proposing it now, so I think we should make a statement. But back to the point that you made about Channel 3 and Channel 6, when I was at Charter Cable at their office, I told them, you know, we're having difficulty with, you know, local stations, and automatically, they said, is it CBS? And that's the one that recently is the worst. So when I spoke with that owner from Michigan, I told them, I says, you know, how can you address some of these stations? He said that he sent equipment to the Crescent City office, but he said that they haven't installed it yet. So that was what he claims. So on the other hand, they were saying that they thought, from the Crescent City office, that they should be doing something with their transmission from Eureka.
Right. That's what I heard.
Somehow, this thing needs to be ironed out between the two parties, and rather than everybody blaming the other side and us not receiving what we're paying for.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Naffa.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to respond. Mr. Naffa, if you can just come on back just for a second. I've actually had some protracted conversations with, attempting to have with both sides and successful with Mr. Brady. The truth of the matter is that we don't really have anyone we can go to other, it's oversight is by the California Public Utilities Commission. I had a conversation with them in San Francisco, and they don't oversee programming. This is a programming issue. There was a technical issue, so regrettably, this is coming back to the FCC, so it's an FCC matter. I had a very long, very productive conversation with Mr. Brady, and I'm not taking sides here, I'm just indicating that we, meaning this community, I personally, since I'm a Charter subscriber, am suffering. And he, empathy, great empathy for me, says, Mr. Gitlin, there's nothing we can do about this. We are trying to work with these people, and it's, they're not working with us. Now, I tried to put the same call into Mr. Rutledge, and I did not get a call back. So I'm going to give everybody, Mr., the CEO of this $109 billion corporation charter, second-largest cable provider in the country, tom.rutledge@chartercom.com if you want to let him hear from you. And there's a phone number here, which is area code 203, 905, 7999. Now, I'm available to share with anybody who wishes to contact me after the meeting. My conversations with the PUC is these things are not resolvable usually by any government agency. It's really public outcry. This affects 450,000 homes, not just in Delnart County, but down in Yuma, up in Yakima, Washington. There are several markets which Northwest provides the service of NBC and CBS, and this is really a case of a dispute which has gone public. It's a squabble, and unfortunately, the victims here are folks like you and I, and people who had folks coming over for the Super Bowl and had to make alternate plans, and you can buy this cable, and you can get that, and somehow, you know, it just doesn't work out right. So I think the community here in Delnart County needs to raise its voice to Mr. Rutledge to sit down and negotiate. I sent him an email this morning, as a private citizen, I might add, indicating that I'm very upset that this has gone on as long as it has, and it needs to be settled now. Now, what's the motivation for him to do anything about it? $109 billion company? I don't know. But I think if we all, in this community and the others that are affected, as I said, 450,000 homes, perhaps Northwest and Charter can come to some kind of agreement soon so that we're not deprived of that which we're paying for. So I'm hopeful we can be helpful in that regard.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate your efforts. Yeah, I think the main thing is that somehow we need to let the state, the PUC, and so on, know that we're having this disconnect, and, you know, somehow, everybody's saying someone else should be doing it, and nothing's getting done.
That's what the PUC said to me.
Right.
We can't do anything about it. It was told to me by a regulator analyst. I have his name, and if you wish to speak to him directly. It's really coming down to an FCC matter.
Okay.
And of course, letting the people at the federal level know, our congressman, what have you, how upset we are that this has gone going. So it's very frustrating. It's not the first time this has happened. I'm not on call-out practice, and I'm certainly not pointing any fingers at anybody. It's your fault, it's your fault. That's not productive. Here, we have a situation where we, you and I, and people who subscribe to Charter, are being deprived of a quality service, and we need to change it now.
Right. Okay. Well, thanks all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Naffa. Public comment?
Linda Sutter, 5th District. In regards to the Charter and Northwest issue, I did find an article online where, I can't remember which one wrote it, but both their personal phone numbers were placed online, and people were calling their personal line. I suggest maybe you guys have a three-way conversation with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? Please, absolutely. Please state your name for the record.
I'm not sure if this is the time for this. My name's Chuck Horton.
Good morning, Chuck.
But I went to Chico over the weekend, and Jill Cordy, my cousin, passed away, and she, Vicky and Esther would like to really thank you, Mr. Hemmingson. They grew up at Pacific Shores, where I got to be out there. I always say, I don't cows, but I shoveled you-know-what. And so, thank you, Mr. Hemmingson. As far as the oil, 1850s, Ludslow was the author. The oil is right off of Point St. George there, you know, they've been saying it since 1850s, so I guess we're not going to get in any hurry, but thank you, Mr. Hemmingson.
You're welcome. Any other additional public comment at this time? Please. Good morning.
Good morning. David Alvarez, also a resident of Delnart County, and I was just here in support of home care and their contract. I just wanted to say, about a year ago, I slipped and fell and had to get flown off to San Francisco for back fusion. So all of us are, you know, at any point in our time. We can need home care, so from a provider, I became almost a recipient. So if it wasn't for my family, you know, I would have needed a recipient, but just on consideration of a livable wage, and thank you.
Thank you. Please, public comment?
I hear Roosevelt Elks somewhere.
There you go. Good morning. My name is Kevin Hendrick. I'm here as the Chair of the Delnart County Democratic Party. Here under public comment, specifically to express our concern about the attempted violation of the Brown Act. At your last meeting, the agenda on January 23rd had a listing for possible action on extending an interim ban on cannabis. However, after voting that measure down on a motion by Gitlin and Supervisors Gitlin and Berkowitz, they made a motion far in excess of what was listed on the agenda, including directing staff to develop an ordinance on the home-growing six plants, cultivation, distribution, medical marijuana, far in excess of what was listed on the agenda. Fortunately, apparently, the attorney or the chair was paying attention, and the action was not allowed. It's disappointing to see them try to do this, though, because both of them know, Mr. Gitlin and Mr. Berkowitz know what the rules are on this. I'm especially disappointed in my own supervisor, Mr. Berkowitz, who's not even here today, or I'd be saying it to his face as well. But I wanted to let you all know that we are watching, even if I'm not here. We're watching your meetings, and we will challenge any action that's taken in violation of the Brown Act. The public has a right to be notified of any action that could be taken. The public has a right to participate in decisions after being notified of that possible decision, and it's not acceptable to simply bring, pull things out of the air and put it on for a vote. People will come if they're notified, and they have a right to know. The Brown Act is not a guideline, it's a law. You're required to follow it, all of you, all of us. In the future, we encourage Supervisors Gitlin and Berkowitz to commit to following the law and to commit to open and transparent meetings. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Public comment? Please.
Well, I'm here as well to represent for in-home health care.
Please state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tracy, Tracy Brown. I'm a local resident. I'm here to represent my son. He's disabled, and I pretty much lived, you know, for two lives. I help him out, and I'm his every care, so I wanted to be here to represent and let you know that it's definitely needed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Be willing to speak to us, Tracy. Thank you for being willing to speak to us. Any other -- Any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board and move to our next scheduled item, which is item, uh, number two, which was a ten fifteen time on cannabis working group, um, update. And then I believe our chairman is here with us today, Jesse Davis of that working group. Jesse, could you please approach the DIAS and give us an update on the progress of the working group?
Jesse Davis, thank you. All right. I'm not as prepared as I would've liked to be, um, so I'm gonna, um, didn't have a chance to print out what I wanted to read, so I'll just read it and provide the printouts as soon as possible. Um, I have a hard time just being in public, so speaking in public is even more difficult. I've been up here a number of times, but it's still difficult, um, especially when there's drama around the subject. Um, so, I think maybe first of all, just say a few words about kinda maybe what I wanted to say at the last Board of Supervisors meeting, but it was caught a little off-guard and so I wasn't focused. Um, I went back and watched all the videos of the workshops that took place last year that were presented by Joel, County Council. And, um, the board didn't have a lot to say. There wasn't a lot of input or direction from any members of the board. And so, I think that was the entire reason why the idea of forming the working group came about, was because the board wasn't able to produce direction. And so, there was a lot of discussion about direction at the last meeting and it just sort of occurred to me afterwards that the entire reason the working group was created was because of the lack of direction on the board. And so, in the beginning, for the board to give direction to the working group is a little bit backwards in my view, since the purpose of creating the working group was to bring direction to the board, which of course can change at any point. Um, but I think at this point, we're definitely trying to find out what the public wants and then bring that direction to the board so the board has something to work with. All right, so that being said, I wrote a few reports, um, but they weren't made official and I did email them to the board, but I'll just go ahead and read it. They're pretty short. Okay, so this was the first one that I wrote in December, following our mid-December meeting. All right. Says, "So, Supervisors, in my opinion, the working group is going very well. We seem to get along great and are able to communicate openly and respectfully. It was good public input at our last meeting. Right now, we're focusing on creating a personal cultivation ordinance that includes and serves the greatest number of people possible. We're working on a tiered system where the size of a cannabis garden must be appropriate for the size of a given property and the setbacks that must be observed. In our discussions, we agree that there must be consensus in order to offer meaningful recommendations to the board. Thank you for making this possible." So we spent the first three meetings, two for sure, just getting to know each other, learning about the process, the public members especially, learning about how the county works, county code, procedure, those kinds of things. And then trying to form some initial direction. Um, we didn't know if we were talking about a complete ban still, if we were gonna be talking about regulation, on what scale. It was really totally open, since there was very little direction given from the board. But I think we did a really good job of coming up with direction right away and became productive right away. So then I wrote, "This report, following our December third meeting, I think it was, I mean, January third, pardon me." Oops, that's the same one. Sorry. All right. So I'll read this. "Happy New Year. At our January third meeting, we made good progress on the personal cultivation outline. Blake Alexander was unable to attend, but there will be opportunity to adjust anything needed. Joel, County Council, will draft an ordinance that will go to the Environmental Review Committee and then to the Planning Commission before consideration by the Board of Supervisors. We have three tiers of outdoor cultivation according to the size of the garden." Uh, keep in mind, this is the personal cultivation outline that we came up with. Um, so three tiers of outdoor cultivation, uh, measured by the square footage of the plant canopy. We have one tier for indoor cultivation. All tiers must comply with these state rules. Plants must not be visible by normal unaided vision from a public space. Plants are in a locked space. County will further define locked. Plants must be inside a private residence, accessory structure, or upon the grounds of the residence. This means no growing on property with no residence, i.e. out in the woods. So these are state rules. Additionally, all personal gardens must be closer to your own house than your neighbors' houses. This would be a county rule. The tiers apply to all residences in all zoning districts. Landlords retain the right to restrict cultivation through traditional lease agreements and would not be part of county code. So Tier One is a maximum of twenty-five square feet canopy with a minimum setback of ten feet from property lines. These plants must be in containers with the idea that they're movable if needed and a maximum total plant height of six feet. And for Tier Two, we have a max canopy of one hundred square feet with a setback of, minimum setback of forty feet and no height or container restrictions. For Tier Three, we have a maximum canopy of three hundred square feet with a minimum setback of sixty feet, no height or container restrictions here either. I'm gonna get some water. Indoor cultivation would be limited to one hundred square feet with no further regulations. Any building alterations that would normally require a building permit would be applied for in the usual way, like any legal activity. Both indoor and outdoor cultivation would be allowed concurrently. This outline is the result of balancing use of enforcement with avoidance of nuisance creation and lawsuits while allowing the greatest individual freedom possible. The canopy limits are deemed to be sufficient to produce a reasonable quantity of cannabis for personal medical or recreational purposes while limiting the likelihood of criminal diversion to black or gray markets. At our next meeting, that's the meeting that we had, um, our last meeting, I forget the date. At our next meeting, we plan to start the discussion on commercial retail sales and developing a transitional cultivation tier to regulate existing collective associations that attend to, that intend to cultivate more than three hundred square feet during the 2018 season and are seeking state licensing. This would be a temporary measure to allow continued operation of Del Norte's existing collectives and integrate them with a complete commercial ordinance that could take the rest of the year to complete. This would also serve as a fun, to function as a means of enforcement on operations that have no intention of compliance in 2018. And so, the meeting that we had following that, on the fifteenth, I think it was, in January, maybe that's what we were shooting for. We ended up getting to the end of the month, thirty-first. That's right, it was after the last board meeting. And so, we got a little off-track. We didn't make a lot of progress at the last meeting. We were, um, regaining our footing after the confusion. Um, so I have not written a report since our last meeting. Um, basically, we went over that cultivation outline with some of the people who weren't present at the meeting, had some further discussion about it, um, pretty much were satisfied with our work as the, with the, the public side and, um, at least in our discussion anyway. It's off to County Council. Um, and then we started talking about, um, existing retail outlets and how to, um, permit those and that'll sort of be, um, a topic of discussion for our next meeting where we'll be talking about a tax issue and, um, huh, I didn't print it out yet. So I can just read the agenda for our next meeting and then that'll pretty much wrap up. So this will be February fifteenth, coming up Thursday. And, um, so it'll be Item One, discussion on a retail ordinance. Item Two, discussion of taxation timelines and policies, public comment and adjournment. So, just focusing on, um, on retail and taxes for our next meeting. Yeah, that's about all I can think of right now.
Okay. Thank you, Jesse. We'll, uh, probably have a little bit of dialogue here. I wanted to say thank you. I think, um, after the last board meeting, it became very clear that the board wasn't doing enough to, um, have the community involved in a process, um, that we, we needed to communicate better. And I think going forward, um, if you're willing to, we'll have you as a standing agenda item on every meeting because the efforts of the working group by essentially volunteers, um, that was to help aid us, the board and the Planning Commission in developing what will be a very complex set of ordinances for our community, that, um, there's people with feelings on this issue on both sides, which, uh, we need to get it right. And I know we expressed that at the last discussion of this, um, but we do absolutely need to get it right and it's a very long and tedious process. My, my thoughts going forward as a working group begins to continue with that direction from the board, which is to help craft language from ordinances to communicate those steps along the way. And I, I, it's my understanding now that the Cannabis Working Group meetings are being, uh, broadcast live and are available on our recordings, just like our board meetings now, so folks could kinda tune into those and, and really follow along. We'll have the updates here, uh, from you personally, I hope, or at least the Vice Chairman, um, at every meeting and then hopefully, you know, we'll get some better communication, which I know I heard very clearly from you, that we need to our public.
Thank you. And I'd like to say, I, I personally think the working group is a huge success and I'm really proud of it. And I'm looking at how other cities and counties are doing it and, including Crescent City, I, I went to their Planning Commission meeting. Um, we're one of the only ones I've seen who have this level of public involvement. Humboldt's ordinance is really terrible, I think, because they didn't include much of the public. It was done just with the Planning Commission and with the board and those two groups didn't have much connection to the community. They were advised by, um, wealthy growers and advisor groups and investor groups who basically wrote an ordinance before they came to anybody and that's basically what they adopted. And so, there wasn't, they didn't really want a lot of public input, it appeared to me. And so, that's what I think is really different about this working group and why I think we're gonna get a really good ordinance eventually, because it's gonna include input from the entire community and, um, not, not create division like I saw in other communities where the Planning Commission was split. It came down all the time, these three-two votes and the board was split. And it was just weird to see that much division in policy creation. You don't usually see that. You usually see the Planning Commission not divided on issues, you know, and so, it creates a lot of problems down the road when you come up with policies that are born in division and they, you know, have lasting divisions.
Very good. Jesse, are you aware, um, where some of the other counties currently stand in the state of California on this issue, ban or no ban? I mean, of the fifty-eight counties, kinda where are we at?
We're like fortieth or tenth, depending on how you, you put it. There's forty, about forty counties who have bans currently. I haven't looked at all of them, honestly, I haven't made time to see who's doing what. But I believe most of those forty aren't really doing anything. And so, if you look at it just in terms of ranking, we're, we're farther ahead than a lot of other counties and cities and-
Is, is there a reason for that? I mean, what are you hearing just from, I mean, you pay a lot greater attention to-
It's just demographics, you know? There's a lot of communities that don't want it to be part of their discussion, period. Um, it's a big thing on the North Coast, so it's hard to avoid, of course, you know? Humboldt, Trinity, Mendocino, um, picked it up first on the North Coast and then in the Central Valley, Sonoma, Monterey, and in the south, a few counties, but for the most part, most cities and counties throughout California are, are, are quite conservative, really. If you look at it on a political spectrum, um, and so, it's just individual demographics, you know? Each community represents themselves individually. Um, so, it's hard to say, you know, how the, the tide of, of education and, and information rolls out, you know? But, um, it's creating a lot of problems throughout the state because there's, there's so many different policies from one county line to another. Um, but, you know, that's sort of the structure of the state of California and the emphasis on local control and local priority. Um, so, it's a problem for some and not for others, I guess.
Yeah, I, I know, continuing this exchange, I know local control is a very big deal for us and that was kinda given a little bit of a setback, per se, um, at our last meeting. Uh, specific to that, are you aware right now, since we're the only county in the state of California that doesn't have either a ban in place or some form of local control, if anybody has applied to the state for either a commercial retail license?
Uh, yeah, there has, there has been. I haven't kept track of it recently, um, but there has been. Um, I don't think it, hasn't yet become any kind of a big problem that I am aware of. Community development would, would get that information first before I would in terms of applicants that have applied to the state successfully and then the state has then transmitted that information to the county. So Heidi would see that first, probably.
Yeah, we'll probably follow up with Heidi since she is here in the audience. I'd be curious.
Sure. But I've been doing a lot of work explaining to people. I get a lot of calls from people who are interested and so I've done a lot of work explaining to people what's going on and, you know, discouraging them from making quick moves, so, yeah.
No, it's appreciated. Any other questions from the board for Jesse at this time before we open it up to public comment? Supervisor Hammington?
Yeah, Jesse, thanks. I appreciate you, uh, all the work that you've done and everything that you're working on to try to get us the information. I wanna get back to this issue of direction, because I'm a little bit confused on direction. What, and, and we've been criticized a little bit. There's only one supervisor that I know of that have, that's actually given you direction and that was, "We don't want any of it, we don't want anything to do with it, you know? Don't bother us about it."
Sure.
Um, so that's the only direction that I think came from this DIAS. Um, so what, what is it as far as direction that you were looking for? Because I, I was in the mode of giving direction, go out, find out what the community wants, what this group wants and bring it back to us so then we can pick it apart and say, "Well, we like this, we don't like that." So I'm confused as far as what you would've liked to seen as far as direction from us, um, on this particular, um, working group's plate. I mean-
Sure.
What is it that we missed out on that we should've said, "Well, you need to do this."
Right.
And if we were gonna do that, why would we have you? That, you know?
Yeah, yeah, excellent question.
I guess that's my point.
For sure, yeah. So, yeah, like I said in the beginning, I, I, I didn't get the sense that we were looking for direction from the board. The point of creating the group was to create some direction-
Right.
-where there wasn't any.
Exactly.
Right. So that was pretty clear in the beginning.
Yeah.
And so, I remember in our first meeting, we sort of looked around and we're like, "Okay, let's look at the makeup of this group that was appointed by the board." And so, that was our first clue about what we're gonna talk about. And then the board, the group was added to for the, for the good. And like, might I add, there is, every single person on the working group is a, a valuable member who contributes positively. Um, so, it was, we didn't, we didn't really know. We sort of all looked at each other and we're like, "What's the direction we're gonna, to go in?" And, and that really wasn't that hard. It took four hours, you know, two, two-hour meetings to, to do that. And we kind of all felt like we were chiming along pretty well. And so, when we'd come up with stuff and we'd be like, "Okay, does this seem viable? Are we going in the right direction? Does this politically, does this make sense?" And we kinda ask, ask everybody around, you know? There's staff who has a little more connection to that than we do. And so, that's kind of what we were going on. We weren't necessarily assuming anything about how you all would vote, just simply, um, doing our job, you know? And, but we also assumed that whatever we came up with would be considered seriously and if there was some problems with it, then it would go back and forth. It wouldn't just be something that we produced a bunch of work on and then y'all voted on it and then either yes or no and it was never talked about again. And we never thought it was like that. We assumed it was a process in-process and that we were being taken seriously the whole time. Um, in terms of specific complaints though, that I, I did address, not, not in a real aggressive way, I don't think, but, um, I suppose, I suppose there could've been more discussion, uh, from the board about it. Um, let's see- Let's see, this probably should have been agendized right from the first working group meeting. There probably should have been some discussion from the board just right from the beginning, a little more feedback, some questions, you know? I sent these, those two little reports that I emailed to you guys, and I got a, like a response just that they were received, and then on the second one, I didn't get any response from anybody that it was even received. So even just that, just like a few comments, could have helped us to give direction, I suppose. But I took all that to mean that the board wasn't interested in giving direction because they wanted to let the working group operate independent of what the board was saying. And I genuinely believe that, and I think everybody in the working group believed that also. And we didn't assume that your silence meant you didn't care or were choosing to be uninvolved. We sort of took that silence to mean you were trusting us to provide some insight first before you took a strong position. And it doesn't mean that you can't ask more questions, just to kind of give us clues about what you would like to know. That's all.
If I can just give you my perspective on private emails, if I'm conversing, if I'm giving you an email, that's really not presenting that to the public.
Sure, yeah.
And I could reply to all...
Yeah, that's why I didn't expect a response.
Exactly. And so that's why you didn't get a response from me. This is the format. We should be in the public when we discuss these things. And so I, and if that's perceived as being non-directional...
Not my accusation, just so you're clear.
Yeah, you know, and, you know, the, I keep getting back to that, because if you want me to, now that you've given us something in a public format, and you've said what your working group has done, and you've given us a report, I can tell you the things that I haven't heard you address.
Right.
And I've got a few things here, and I can throw them out there. Limits would be one. These are things that I've heard from the public. Limits, are you going to limit the number of grows? You're talking about tier one, two, three. Are you going to have certain limits for tier one, certain limits for tier two, and so forth? And then as far as selling, are you going to have limits on the number, are we going to have limits on our county on the number that we're going to allow? I didn't hear any discussion of that. So those are things that I've heard from the public saying, "Well, gee, how many are we going to, you know, how many of these are we going to have?" And until that comes forward, that you haven't been discussing that, I don't know how to respond to that and come back to you and say, "Hey, wait a minute, what about this?" Water was another issue. Water usage was another issue that's come up to me from the public. So I didn't hear any discussion about water usage and how, maybe how you're going to allow or not allow, or how we're going to not allow, and how that's going to come back to us. And the other thing is odor, the smell. That's probably one of the largest things that I've heard more comments about, is, "Gee, I really don't like the smell. I don't want it, you know, next to my house because it smells. I don't want my kids smelling it, blah, blah, blah." I never heard any discussion of that. So those are the things, once you, once you give us something, then we can respond to that and say, "Well, hey, wait a minute, you guys didn't discuss this, or what about this?" But, you know, until that dialogue happens, until something's presented to the board, I don't know how we can react to it unless we want to just say, "Oh, no, let's don't, let's just bury our head in the sand, and we just don't want to have anything to do with it. We'll just ban it." Or at this point, allow it. I mean, right now, it's allowed. Go forth and do, you know? So anyway, those are just some comments that I have, and this is the kind of dialogue I think we need to have. If this is direction, you know, and certainly, you know, we'd have to have consensus on that for you to address these things, but, you know, those are just my thoughts.
Yeah, I think we're just now at that point. I don't, I don't think that...
Exactly, and I agree with you.
Two months ago, we were even at that point. I think we're on schedule.
And I agree. I think we had an opportunity to do that, and now things are kind of in flux.
Sure. I think we just go back to the trajectory that we were on and continue to do the work we're on and just continue these sorts of things. And just to a few of the points that you made, the odor was the bulk of the discussion for the, the outline that you see there was, is just focused on personal cultivation, your own personal grows, the six plants. We haven't gotten into any of the commercial stuff about how many gardens selling water usage, which is a commercial issue, not so much your private gardens. The smell is a private garden issue, and so that was the, kind of the entirety of our discussion about how to deal with that in a way that's enforceable, that doesn't create a bunch of cost to the county, but also doesn't heavily infringe on individual rights, and so.
Excellent. Thank you, Jesse. Supervisor Gitlin?
Jesse, we've spoken publicly and we've spoken privately. Is there any confusion on your part on where I stand on this issue?
No, I'd say you've, to your credit, you've been extremely clear from the beginning, before it even became a county discussion.
Now, we've had speakers coming up here, I refer to Mr. Derigo, who's come up here and has beseeched our board, "Where do you stand?" And I think I've been the only one who's been clear about it. Now, I would say that we are a board, we're not individuals. Go ahead and give us options having to do with the six-plant protocol. Alma does not affect six plants, and give us direction on medical, medicinal, for compassionate reasons. But I have and continue to be opposed to the cultivation and retail of this product in Delmore County. I don't think I need to hear any additional information. It's a bit disconcerting when I'm here, a fellow supervisor call us, "Don't bother us." Did I ever say to you, "Don't bother us"?
I don't understand the question.
Did I ever say to you, "Don't bother us," meaning the board of supervisors? Did I ever say that to you?
In regards to the cannabis question?
Yeah.
I don't, no, I'd never use those two.
Okay, of course. It wouldn't come out of my mouth, but yet Supervisor Hemmingson alleges I come across with this "don't bother us" attitude. That's totally and completely false. So I'm confused by the fact that I'm going off a September 12 meeting on whatever options were. Number one, again, this is irrespective of the six-plant, a complete ban on commercial recreational cultivation of marijuana, which I've asked our chairman to put on the February 27th agenda. He hasn't responded to me yet whether he'll put that on there as a one-sentence ordinance to take us out of this Twilight Zone era. The second one was the series of moratoria, which we discussed, and yes, they need a four-fifths vote. We shouldn't be condemned for any supervisor, and there's two of us here, one is here now and one is not here, of saying, "Oh, this is what I've decided to do after 45 days of thinking about it." Instead, I'm accused of, and I don't know how your back is today, I'm accused of backstabbing you. Now, I'm expressing to you my opinion. You need three votes to develop any ordinance. You don't need Gitlin. You need three votes. If Gitlin opposes it, and I don't know what the other colleague, my colleagues are going to do, then you can go forth and move forward, and I think you should. The two areas where I do have flexibility is the medicinal marijuana and, of course, the protocol and the six-plant, six-plant legal marijuana. And what still has not been dealt with, and I still have heard no addressing, this is against federal law. Any of this discussion we're having now on marijuana violates federal law. I did take an oath, and I took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America. Also, same thing for California. But the last time I looked, federal law trumps, pardon the word trumps, but federal law supersedes state law.
Federal law integrates with state law.
So we're having this discussion on, on, on the legalization and the implementation of commercial cultivation and growth, and yet it is against federal law. I do have a problem with that. So I'm going to continue to make myself available to you to let you know how I feel on the subject. I don't consider myself unreasonable. I think I represent a very large section of this community who's concerned that the bringing of this product in, and you've heard me. I will continue to be clear on that. I don't think I need to kick this can down the road, and we need more information. My mind is clear, and I've made that clear to you. So I appreciate your upcoming up here today. I appreciate the work that you've done. I recognize you have a difficult task in front of you, but I'm part of that, probably 40 other counties, who think that this product is problematic and will cause great problems as we look down the road. So I wish you good luck as you move forward, and if you, we have consensus on the two areas where we can agree on, medical and the protocol for the six-plant, six-plant protocol, then let us see it, and sooner rather than later. And I'll, again, I'll ask my chairman to put that, again, publicly, to put the one-sentence ban on commercial recreational cultivation and retail sales of marijuana in Delmore County into the February 27th agenda.
Yeah, happy, be happy to speak about the Controlled Substances Act and how it relates to what we're doing here, if you, if you would like. And also, just so you know, it wouldn't be legal for the county to float a complete ban on all forms of cannabis, recreational and medical. That would be, I think, outside the, be violating state law, so I don't think that the county has the ability to make ordinances that are in violation of state law because they are consistent with federal law. So just an important point to note. But thank you, I appreciate it.
I'll defer to legal counsel on that.
Yes, absolutely, me too.
Thank you, Jesse. I'm going to take public comment. We might invite you back up. We're going to take public comment now. Please approach the dais.
Roger. You know, I'm sorry, I think that this was a civil conversation, but then you made it personal, and it wasn't personal. I didn't hear that from Howard or Hemmingson, and I just got to say that. Secondly, I believe, and it's probably, maybe I'm inaccurate, but I believe that Mr. Campbell said he could develop an ordinance, and it probably wouldn't be something we liked. And I thought, "Well, if you can develop an ordinance, how come you haven't developed the ordinance so that we can have the work group pick out a par of what they would, you know, what people would like, what they wouldn't like?" That would cut in a lot of time, save a lot of time. It seems like when we start talking about the federal law issue, yeah, federal law supersedes state law, but you know what? Our county and throughout the whole state, we voted to legalize it, and California usually is a trendsetter, and there are currently 26 states in our union that have legalized the medical form. I don't know about how many have done the recreational form, but I'm hoping to see that eventually the, the country will, or the federal government will have a change of heart. I know not as long as Jeff Sessions is in, he doesn't like it at all. Anyway, there is a few issues. I would like to see that the working group do a little bit quicker than what they have been. And there's a lot of things to take into consideration, and I'm hoping it's all not for not. I'm hoping that whenever they do finally come up with an ordinance that, that the people could live with, because I want you all to know, every district voted, some by 300 and 400 points. The only one that can get away with anything is Hemmingson's district, because it was almost a 50/50 thing. But everybody voted in this county to have it legalized, and I'm thinking that they were kind of thinking it was going to be able to be cultivated and selling. Yeah, there's a smell problem, but that's not a, that's not a problem for the, for you guys. That's a civil, that's a civil issue that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment. Please.
I'm still here as the chair of the Delmore County Democratic Party. We had a conversation about this last night.
Kevin Hendricks for the record.
Kevin Hendricks for the record. And Bob Berkowitz is my supervisor.
Thank you.
What do the people want? That's a really important question, and Linda just referred to the fact that we all voted on this, right? I checked, Delmore County, 59.5% of Delmore County voters said yes. This is something we support, so I don't know why there's confusion over what the people want. When people vote, it's advisory, yes. But I don't think there's any confusion. What seems confusing to me is why, Mr. Gitlin, if you're opposed to this, which you actually didn't state what your position is, but I think I know, that you're opposed to implementing this law that a vast majority of people voted for, it just doesn't make sense why at the last meeting you voted against a ban that was ready to go. It was already in place. It was, seems inexplicable that you had a chance to vote for extending a ban, which would be consistent with your philosophy, and you voted no. It doesn't make sense to me. It's, people ask me, "Well, maybe they didn't know what they were doing." And I said, "Well, or they're being irresponsible." Neither is a good choice, if you ask me, as far as, I'm especially disappointed in my own supervisor, Bob Berkowitz, because there's no reasonable explanation. And as much as I am entertained by Republicans attacking Republicans, closer it gets to home, the less funny it, it seems, you know? So people attacking Chris for trying to take a reasonable approach to this. Buy some time to come up with a comprehensive ordinance. So that you're clear, we've discussed it last night, and at least this half of the county, the Democratic half of the county, supports the will of the people. We support development of a comprehensive ordinance that allows the things that we voted for. We are willing to accept a temporary ban to allow time, and clearly you have some good people working on it, but the more I learn about this, the more I realize there's a lot of stuff we don't know. What seems particularly egregious on this vote is that there's disruption with no plan. I mean, literally, there are no rules. By your vote at the last meeting, you've created a state of lawlessness. And I wrote a song about no law north of the Klamath. It's an old saying, but really, this is not a good thing. And the result of the expiration of the interim ban is that there are no, there literally are no rules. Anybody now that wants to apply, how does that meet your goal of not having growers or retail? Because right now, they don't have to have your permission. I checked in the planning department, and if it's land use for retail, you can do retail. I have egg zone property. I could apply for a permit. I could be in the business and pay the fees, and there's nothing you could do about it at this point. How is that good policy? It's short-sighted and it's irresponsible. And what's going to happen when these people apply for permits and they get their state permit under the current regime of no rules, and then you try to do something retroactively? "Oh, yeah, well, now we have it together. A year from now, we have rules, and we want to tax you." Well, they're not going to be happy about that, and the polite people say those are legal issues. The realistic people say those are lawsuits coming at the county. How is that good public policy? Total lack of planning. It's astounding to me. And when I think about, I would never want to do it because we'd have to build a fortress around our house. But I do concern myself with, what if my neighbor did it? And they stuck a straw into our groundwater and sucked it all up, and everybody in the neighborhood has no water? But guess what? We have no rules. How is that good public policy? It just smacks of politics, and I'm sick of it. I expect our elected officials to be more responsible. I congratulate you, Chris, on being as calm as you have been in trying to steer this, because I would have lost it months ago. All I can say is, and in the future, if you're going to have any kind of extended conversation on this subject, you don't list it as an update. You list it as a discussion on policy, and then you can all express your opinions, and everybody knows you're going to do it. You don't put an update, then have an extended conversation about what your policy preferences are. That's not how it's supposed to work. If you want the public to be involved, you need to let the public know what you're doing. You need to have meetings so the public knows that you're talking about it, and people will show up. I tell you what, if you properly agendize the meetings, I will make sure people show up.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment.
Wow, that just got me heated and, okay, my name's Tracy Brown, for the record. As a woman, as a mother, as a patient, I'm hearing your concerns. I'm impolite. I'm in politics in no way, but as far as your concerns, I can understand them as a personal and as a community issue. I'd like to say, you know, as far as the smell, if you understand that marijuana actually produces oxygen to a great degree, it's actually environmentally wonderful for our environment. I personally know in Crescent City that the harbor has stunk really bad for our town. It's been offensive. Smell is just a smell. As far as concerns of maybe it being harmful to our community, our community suffers a lot of mental illness with our homeless, our residents, and I know that medicinally it is a wonderful product. And I grew up here personally knowing Crescent City to honestly have the reputation of harder drugs. I grew up with knowing that it was prevalent, more so than anybody could even realize, in our community. It's nice to see people actually getting away from that, and we're in a big movement. And people who have suffered such hardships, you know, I grew up in poverty, so I'm an expert when it comes to disabled, the poor, the suffering. And it's, it's in no way harmful than an aspirin, and I ask you to consider that. And thank you.
Thank you very much, Tracy. Public comment. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Any further questions for Jesse at this time? Great. Thank you again, Jesse. We look forward to seeing you again in two weeks, and appreciate all your time and efforts as chairing this discussion with the board. We'll probably have something on the next agenda to help address this issue of the current dilemma that we placed ourselves in at the last meeting. But thank you again for your time. Okay, on the consent agenda, there was a proclamation. I'd like to go ahead and read it at this time. Okay. This is Refresh Better With Water and Rethink Your Drink, February 14, 2018. Whereas 57% of adults in Delnar County are overweight or obese, and whereas in Delnar County, 21% of Delnar school youth are obese, and 18.9% of Delnar youth are overweight. Whereas overweight and obesity influenced by poor diet and physical inactivity are significantly associated with an increased risk of type 2 diabetes, heart disease, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, stroke, cancer, asthma, osteoarthritis, arthritis, sleep apnea, social and physical problems, and poor health status. And whereas the single largest source of calories in American diet is carbohydrate soft drinks, providing over 5% overall caloric intake. The average American consumes the equivalent of 39 pounds of sugar each year from soda and other sweetened beverages. A 20-ounce bottle of soda contains the equivalent of approximately 17 teaspoons of sugar. The American Heart Association recommends that adults consume no more than five to nine teaspoons of added sugar per day. And whereas the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, the U.S. Surgeon General, and the Institute of Medicine recommend reducing consumption of sugar-sweetened beverages as critical strategy to reserve the epidemic of obesity in our nation. And whereas water is the best option for keeping the body hydrated. Water hydrates the cells, making the whole body work better inside and out. Drinking water every day is a healthy behavior that may help in the fight against obesity. And whereas Delnar County SNAP Ed program is committed to supporting healthy lifestyle and preventing chronic disease and obesity. Therefore, in collaboration with many other states nationwide, Delnar County SNAP Ed programs proclaim February 14, 2018, as Refresh Better With Water and Rethink Your Drink Day, and encourages all Delnar County residents to drink water instead of sugar drinks on February 14, 2018, to reverse the epidemic of obesity, prevent chronic disease, and promote healthier heart. Passed and adopted this day, the 13th day of February 2018, approved by our board during the consent agenda. So, you're here to accept this?
Thank you so much for your support and your time and attention for these important matters and your support. So I'm just here to represent SNAP Ed Program Public Health, Department Health and Human Services. Our program is promoting healthy lifestyle and offering nutrition education, physical activity promotion in a way to prevent obesity and its related chronic disease, which is significant high number of people are high, high blood pressure, obesity-related disease we are suffering in our community. Especially in youth, we've seen a lot of, a number of youth are the high consumption of sugar-sweetened beverages. So I would like to encourage you, also asking all of you, to support in a day of February 14, which is Valentine's Day, heart day, heart health month, and celebrating. So we have access to clean drink waters. We have purest, clean water. We have access here in Delnar County. So we just wanted to, all of us acknowledge that the impact, a negative impact on our health by reducing sugar-sweetened beverages and focusing on healthy beverages, especially water, the importance of it in hydration, and all of us to celebrate healthy living. So I'm here to give you the goodie bag filled with some information as well, all of you, and the button we made to Hydration Week, and just enjoy the clean water we have available here on us. So we have a lot of work ahead of us. So in May 16, in statewide movements, we are actually doing Rethink Your Drink Way in a statewide. Every county will be participate in a statewide movement. It is a simple act with choosing water. It is a great act to helping our health in our community, too. So I just wanted to come back in May to share with you the movement we are working on, Rethink Your Drink Day. I think this is a great step to also celebrate Valentine's Day, to designate this day to Healthy Drinks Day. Refresh Better With Water and Rethink Your Drink. Thank you for your support. I would like to give you my goodie bag filled with cookbooks and recipe cards and ideas of healthy living, so with the buttons we made.
Outstanding.
So join the movement for champion for change. So I'm here to continue to support healthy lifestyle for our community. I'm looking forward to come back again to share more about this movement.
Absolutely. If you just leave those with Kylie, that'd be terrific. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on. Actually, real quick, on item number 14, is Dave Stiles with us today? Good morning, Dave. I just, we don't often recognize our folks with the Fish and Game Commission, which is an advisory group to the Board of Supervisors. If you want, please approach the dais and let us know about your interest in the Fish and Game Commission and your appointment, and we look forward to having you serve.
My name is Dave Stiles. I live in District 5. Bob Berkowitz, he called me and asked me if I would be willing to serve on that committee and as a hunter and fisherman and enjoy the outdoors, I naturally said, yes, I would.
Well, we appreciate it, Dave, and thank you for your volunteer efforts here in our community.
Thank you.
Yeah. Have a great day. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on with item number 15, which is Consider Miscellaneous Legislative and Budget Matters Pertinent to the County of Delnar. Authorize the Chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state or federal government. CEO Serena.
At this point, we don't have any additional letters for the Chair to sign. As an update regarding legislation, obviously, the state is working on a number of different bills. Some of those are return bills. You'll remember Assembly Bill 1250 that dealt with contracting. It's back. It was an opposition by RCRC, and we sent multiple letters opposing that, but it will be back, and we will be asking for additional letters this year to oppose. There is some information going through in regards to financial institutions and cannabis, and there's an Assembly Joint Resolution being sent to the federal government that requests them to take a look at the legislation and allow financial institutions to be able to consider banking with companies and individuals that have cannabis businesses. That one will be an interesting one to watch on the federal level as well as at the state level, because they're looking at legislation for California-specific. And there's a few others that are going through at this point. Mr. Stiles, there is something, and I have yet to review it, and it has to do with hunting and sport fishing licenses, Assembly Bill 986. So I'm going to do a little research on that one, but you might want to look at that one, because I'm not quite sure what they're trying to do with that. It might be benign, but I don't really trust the state to do the right thing when it comes to fish and wildlife actions, so.
Yeah. And then there's agriculture. Water management is back on, so we'll be reviewing that. I know you're familiar with that one. From the standpoint of budget issues, we'll be bringing back the mid-year budget report at the next meeting. Right now, no huge crises. We're on, I'd say, every budget right now is within a margin of error for those, for their projections. And then we'll be looking at going into April with the start of meetings with individual departments and starting to produce next year's fiscal budget, fiscal year's budget. And at this point, that's really all I've got.
Okay.
Jay, just update. Last week, I think it was January 31, the Assembly introduced AB 1971. I'd appreciate, that's the Mental Health Services amending the Welfare Institutions Code 4031, which changes the language and from grave disability in serving the homeless, mentally ill, to language which urgently offers medical treatment as a basic human need. So I'd appreciate your taking a look at AB 1971, just introduced, it's in committee. They're currently, I think, one county has already indicated they're sending in legislative recommendations to bolster that law. It seems like, that bill, which seems like a real good opportunity to help those in need. And one large county, Los Angeles County, has already lost, I think last year, 831 people died on the streets, mentally ill, homeless, as a result of not receiving medical, appropriate medical care. And I think they're changing the language. So I appreciate an update as AB 1971 meanders its way through the system. Thank you.
One last thing. We do have some, I guess you would call it movement at the federal level regarding infrastructure, but it's extremely vague at this point. And I think it's important to point out that the number went from the President's original hope of $1 trillion down to $200 billion nationwide. And it now appears that with the limited amount of information that's been put out regarding the infrastructure bill or potential legislation and funding, that it looks like it's going to be very competitive. There is a carve-out for rural areas. Not sure what the definition of rural area is yet. They're saying areas less than 50,000. And I don't know if that means cities and counties, or if it's actual areas that they're going to define by targeted income or something of that type. But it's also looking to be a situation where there would be matching funds required either through state money or local money. And we, you know, that's something we need to watch, because that typically becomes an issue for us, because most of our matching money is actually federal money, which you can't usually match federal with federal. So we'll need to keep an eye on that. Right now, the details are fairly limited. They are leaking out. They leaked out a little bit in January, then he came out, the administration came out with some information this last week, and we'll be following that with our lobbyists.
Yeah. And I appreciate you bringing that up. I know we've had a couple conversations here this last week since the State of the Union address where some of this information was either leaked out or proposed. In conversation with Greg Burns at Van Scowick, I know this will be a long, ongoing discussion within Congress to get to some reasonable piece of legislation that's going to allow for the infrastructure needs to be met across the United States, not just here in Delnar County. It was obviously encouraging to hear this piece specific to a rural set aside. I think there's some, still a great deal of confusion around that, but it is an opportunity for us specifically to lobby on behalf of Delnar County in clarifying what that means, rural, and more importantly, the population figures that are initially being tossed out of 50,000 or less population, and defining parameters around that, if they mean a city, if they mean a county, if they mean, if they could expand that to a region. So clarity is needed. I think us pushing forward with some clarity with our congressional representatives and others, either on federal highways or other infrastructure projects like we're working on with our Border Coast Regional Airport Authority are important at this time. And so I think in the coming months, as we begin to craft our thoughts on this locally and communicate those thoughts to our congressmen, that we begin to plan a trip to D.C. that will allow some of these thoughts to be shared direct, face-to-face with our representatives. But I do appreciate the follow-up by you, Jay, on that, and also if Greg, you're listening, those conversations that we've had the last two weeks on this important infrastructure bill that will be being debated in Congress.
One other update in regards to the continuing resolution that funded the federal government here recently, and it expires again coming up, but it did include the super rural designation for ambulance, which is something that obviously is very important to us here in Delnar Ambulance. That was something that we've had discussions in our negotiations over their contract extension and the fee increases. But that is, that's a very positive step that it was involved in that, in that continuing resolution. Gives them some stability.
Great. Thank you, Jay. Any other questions for Councilor Jay at this time? Okay, very good. We're going to go ahead and move on with our committee reports, which is item number 16. Supervisor Gitlin, can you start us off, please?
Yes. A couple of weeks back, I attended the annual Delnar County Fair Volunteer Dinner. Say thanks to all those great volunteers. It's a great kickoff for the new director, Kim Floyd, and the fair is actually looking for a theme this year. So if you have a good idea, please share it with the Delnar County Fair on its Facebook site. Also want to recognize PAC Power for their generous donation. We had a little ceremony at the Escher for the Point of Honor. PAC Power donated a sizable sum of money in a ceremony for the future home of the monument. Last day of January, I attended the UnepD dinner presented by Building Healthy Communities and learned some of the ongoing programs, helping our kids read at grade level, third grade level. Third graders reading at third grade level. Last week, I also listened to a presentation by the Valley Electric Association on community choice aggregation. Now, a lot of you may not know what this means. You've heard of it. It's obscure. The CCA was born in 2002 as a result of AB 117, which allows communities to form utility aggregates, which perhaps offer participants a real opportunity to save on your electric bills, some guesstimated somewhere in the 10% to 15% category. California is one of eight states that allows cities and counties to aggregate its utilities and electrical power. There's more information to learn on this, including the conducting of a feasibility study to see if an aggregate can work in Delnar County, but I'm hopeful that this will be an opportunity for us to help those in need to save on their, on their utility bills. I've already mentioned the issue with Charter Spectrum and Northwest Broadcasting. We know that it's a frustrating one, and one in which we have two parties who are squabbling over these rates. So I've already sent a letter off, I've already spoken to Mr. Brady at Northwest, and I've sent a communication to Tom Rutledge at chartercom.com, and asking him to please get this thing settled. Now we're being victimized by this un- Now we're being victimized by this unsatisfactory condition. So if anyone here needs email information or phone numbers for both parties, please give me a call. And I think I mentioned to you, I had a conversation with Heather Snow regarding AB nineteen seventy-one, and how the amendment to the Health and Institutions Code four oh three one could be very helpful to Delnart County. We'll get back to you with more information on that as the bill meanders through committee and onto the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I attended the volunteer dinner at the Delnart County Fairs, acknowledges the great participation in volunteers that we have at the fair, which I think is always a, a great thing to do every year. Had a meeting out at Redwood School with the Jeffs. Jeff Harris, Superintendent of Schools, Jeff Napier, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, and Jeff Daniels from the Road Department, where we're looking at traffic circulation and see what we can do to maybe alleviate some of the issues out there during school pickup and delivery of students, as well as the functions that they have out there in taking a lot of parking and really not having much room for parking. So we're looking at that. I think we've got some solutions, we just gotta see if we can get those implemented. Had a tri-agency meeting. We had our first two-by-two meeting with California Fish and Wildlife, which we have never had a two-by-two meeting with that agency, so it's nice to get that started. Charles Bartolata and Frank Kemp were there, as well as Supervisor Howard. We had discussions, a lot of discussions, but some of those included the breaching of the lake, Pacific Shores, land swap, the land swap possibilities. So a lot of, a lot of discussion items that we have with Fish and Wildlife. Had a future facilities meeting, went to Building Healthy Communities presentation, had a strategy meeting with staff on a USDA conference call that we had the next day. We have opportunity possibly with the changing of the Director, the California Director, seems to be interested in helping rural counties, so we may have some opportunity there. And then later the next week, I had some site visits with Fish and Wildlife on areas of access, fishing access mostly, but access sites that the county used to have a maintenance agreement with Fish and Wildlife that has run out quite a few years ago. And the sites are in disrepair now and, and need attention. So those sites that we visited were Point St. George, the Pebble Beach Stairway, the Saxton's Boat Launch, as well as Pacific Shores. And as you might know, we've had a significant cleanup going on out in Pacific Shores. The partnerships that we formed to get that done have worked extremely well. Amount of material that we've, that we've removed off of Pacific Shores, I think, is around two hundred tons of material, numerous trailers. It, it's just been a huge success to this point. And those people that we really need to thank, I think Helen Ferguson from the public guy had at, Tom Kenny donated towing services, I mean, just some, some great things. County personnel that are involved, Domin McMello, Alan Winogroda, Heidi Consable, Elizabeth Cable, Jay Serena, all these people played important parts to get us there, to get us to this point. And then Fish and Wildlife staff, Charles Bartolata and Frank Kemp, who have done just an outstanding job of supporting and helping us with that, with that cleanup. You know, these things don't get done without partnerships at this level, and that one has worked very well. The host station that we're going to have out there, the Watchman Station, whatever you wanna call it, we've started, started the groundwork for that. The pad for the operation is, is there, the parts and pieces are ordered, and hopefully within the next couple of months, we'll have that up and running. And just to address, you know, back to the Charter Cable issue, I did have numerous calls on Charter Cable, and, you know, I don't know what part we can play in there, but hopefully we can, we can do something. It's always interesting to me that these negotiations come up around Super Bowl, and this year we've had Super Bowl and the Olympics, and it's affecting both of those. And in some ways, I think that's a little unfair to the public to, to have those negotiations happen, happen during those times. Seems to be a leverage issue, so not pointing any fingers, but it certainly impacts the public. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hemmingson. So some great news came along this year. I was contacted by Delnart Senior Senator Charlene Maisy. They have fortunately received some additional federal funding this year to expand and help expand their Meals on Wheels program. I know the Board has taken an active interest in this program over the last several years and, and looking to move north into District Three, Smith River. And it's a great time for us to get on board and, and see if we can find some folks out there that'd be willing to participate in that program. And it was great that, that, that federal funding came down from great sources to actually support finally expanding that into Smith River. And so if you know anybody in Smith River, if you're listening to this today, reach out to them, because it's a very short list of qualifications to actually participate in the program on Meals on Wheels, and love to see you participate in that program, because the funds are finally there to, to help this program expand to Smith River. Maybe our triple kick helped get the word out on that. Also met with constituent in Hiuchi over some flooding in county property specific to an area on the east side of the highway that a lot of folks like to walk their dogs in. There's some concerns essentially with some old culverts under the state highway there that Caltrans and their rideaway have some control on, but it's causing flooding both on the south and north side of the highway there in Hiuchi, and we're trying to address those issues. And I know Community Development Department, specifically Randy Hooper and also Alex are really moving forward quickly, hoping to address some of those issues and concerns expressed by the residents. As Supervisor Hemmingson mentioned, we attended a tri-agency meeting, and really wanted to make mention of the Board of Supervisors showing at the Four-H Soup Supper. It was great to see everybody out there. A lot of great bidding going on by some of us and getting money to where it needs to be, which is in the hands of our youth, who really participate a lot in agricultural activities here in our community. It's great to see all the supervisors out there having that discussion. As Supervisor Hemmingson mentioned, we did have that two-by-two with Charles Bartolata and Frank over there with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. I also had a series of discussions with staff, how to best move forward with the cannabis discussion resulting after the last meeting, and how best to get that moving forward. We gave some direction to staff at that meeting to really try to keep that working group in play, and you heard those discussions here today. But what now do we bring back to the Board, hopefully at our next meeting, which would allow us to place something there so we do again have that local control that we need in place? Met with Brock Jera, who was brought here from New Zealand by Building Healthy Communities Program to look at economic development-type activities that we could do as a community to help bolster jobs and various other growth-type projects in our community. I think this will be well-timed, especially with the discussions that we are having with tri-agency, as Supervisor Hemmingson mentioned, with USDA. And there could be an excellent nexus for us to develop programs, and specifically programs backed with funding, that will really allow some huge infrastructure-type projects to proceed here, and more importantly, maybe have some discussions with the USDA that will help get us out of some, some debt, like the debt we're carrying with the harbor at this time. In addition, CEO Serena and I and Heidi Consable, Director of Community Development, attended a meeting with Bird Box Productions and their location managers, which was more of a thank you to the community for really kinda rolling out the red carpet for the production. It was made mention that they're spending roughly a million dollars a day here in, for that three weeks that they're here in the community. That's an incredible amount of money to be spending on a film, and I don't think we've seen anything like that since, since the days of filming of E.T. or Star Wars here in our community. But the respect that our, specifically our staff or sheriff was given by those that were on, on location and the production managers, which I've talked to many times personally, was kudos, kudos, kudos. I've never seen a community really go out and make it this easy for them to film here. And the word of, that was carried back to us is that they wanna do it again. So hopefully, with the, with the right movie and the right script, they'll pick us again for something else, and we'll, we'll see that economic impact that we know that this Bird Box Productions gave here, which was a great boost in the middle of the winter to Delnart County. As Supervisor Gitlin and Supervisor Hemmingson did mention, attended the community gathering put on by Building Healthy Communities, gave a short presentation there on the impacts of the BHC movement here in the county over the last six years. There has been a great deal of impacts, especially associated around food and health and literacy, which has been something that this Board, specifically with our children's budget, has really focused on and supported, not only with the Delnart County Unified School District, but also with our own local programs in helping to support those measures. As I made mention earlier, we had several discussions around infrastructure with Greg Burns from Van Scowick, who works for us in Washington, D.C. on our behalf, had agenda review for the county, agenda review for the Delnart Solid Waste Management Authority. And then in addition, and last but not least, went to the National Rifle Association Dinner that supports youth, youth shooting sports and safety here in our community. And there was an incredible turnout there, probably close to three hundred people that really wanna see youth do things the right way here, especially around shooting. And we see so much sad news these days in our nation, so the more our youth know about the importance and safety around shooting, the better off we'll all be. And that wraps us up for today. Look forward to seeing you guys all again in two weeks.